Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Regular agenda, Monday, June 4th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. I hereby call this meeting an order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Announcements. Special election is Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at St. Augustine's Minutes of May 21st, 2018. I've read the minutes myself. I don't have any corrections myself. Mr. Board?
I just have one. In the present, under Mr. Cool, it says Selectman. Shouldn't it say Secretary?
We sometimes do it and sometimes she doesn't, so we can denote that. That's fine.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was something.
We weren't trying to say that.
I'm not offended.
No, I was just wondering.
That was something I had done, but it was not something I felt compelled to have to do, but we will do that. Thank you.
So I make a motion to accept the minutes of May 21st with the correction stated.
Second?
Rule?
Aye.
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 Agenda item number four. Departments and Boards. Regarding the Planning Department, this evening, we'll be looking to appoint an associate member to the Planning Board, and that is the interest of Pamela Maloney, becoming an Associate Planning Board Member.
Hillary and Pamela.
Yes, both she and the Town Planner are here. Mr. Chairman, just to remind folks that back in the Spring Annual Town Meeting, there was an actual article that was passed to remove the elected position of Associate Planning Board Member, and the Planning Board had made that vote, and the Board of Selectmen had put it forth as an article, and it was adopted, and now, since it's an actual appointed position, the Board of Selectmen would make that appointment, and I'd ask that the Town Planner and Ms. Maloney come forward. The Town Planner had approached me about the fact that the role for Associate Planning Board Member is typically only brought forward when there is an actual special permit or thereof, and maybe you can explain that a little bit better to the Board.
Sure. Special permits are issued by the Planning Board, as you probably know, and a special permit does not have to be issued, but it does require a supermajority vote. So that means four out of five positive votes. And if one of the Planning Board Members has a conflict of interest or can't attend, we need an Associate Member who can be there to attend to make the fifth person. The last thing you want is somebody starting an application for a special permit with only four possible votes, because that puts a lot of pressure on all of the Planning Board Members to make a unanimous decision. Also, according to state statute, a Planning Board Member can only miss one meeting of a series of public hearings, and they are allowed to catch up from that one miss by hearing audio and then signing an affidavit saying that they did catch up and that they are fully ready to move forward, but you still need, it's always good to have the extra person in case, you know, it drags on and, you know, two or three people can't make it. This is just a safety measure. And it is my understanding that Pam has also worked with the, she's on the Open Space --
Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee and the Conservation Commission.
Right. So she has, so she's well aware of how Boards and Committees work, but she doesn't have any conflict of interest that I can foresee at this point in time.
Thank you for your interest. I'll hear a motion to appoint.
Still moved.
And the appointment is till?
It's effective through next --
We usually do one in June.
Right.
So June 30th.
30th, and then they'll reappoint after that.
So we had a motion, and a second?
I'll second.
And a rule?
Aye.
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 So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
It's underneath there. You got it.
I got it.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to continue to update the Board as we're making progress on all fronts with regards to collections, and in this particular case, I told you that I would look at where we were by the end of the next quarter, and as of May 31st, we're actually now at 97 percent tax collections, which is much better than it was last year. The Collector/Treasurers will be sending out the real estate demand notices by June 7th, and the demand bills will go to all property owners that still owe the 2008 real estate taxes. One of the things that I wanted to point out is, I actually have been doing an awful lot of work looking at comparison data, and last year, at the same time, we were, actually at the end of the fiscal year, we were only at a collection rate of 230,000. We're already exceeding that collection rate in terms of it being better at a lower amount having still outstanding, and we're at about 160,000. So we're still running about 60,000 more in collections, which is terrific, and I expect that by the end of the month, that will even go, you know, further in the right direction. So the only other thing that the Treasurer/Collector wanted to bring to your attention is that, once again, at the beginning of July 1st, we'll be implementing a more vigorous program for outreach, and it will consist of these quarterly letters and phone calls. But 97 percent is very good.
Very good.
I'm pleased with that, considering where we have been in the past, and I think that's terrific news, and I give a Treasurer/Collector an awful lot of kudos for answering that particular measurement that we started out as of last year.
Item five on the agenda is Public Forum Citizens' Comments. There's a three-minute limit in Public Forum.
I just have a quick question. Item 6C on the agenda. Will there be an opportunity for citizens to make any comments about what is presented by the Board at that time?
Not. Probably not.
Probably not. Okay.
No, it would be a no. We have our public forum, during our public forum, and then the rest is the Selectmen's business. So if there's something you wanted to address, you might want to do so now.
It's a little difficult to address without seeing what the Board's going to discuss.
I think the Chairman will address it in 6C.
In 6C.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, that'd be --
Will it be taken out of order?
No. No. This is a legal letter. It's a legal document. We will be addressing it in a legal fashion, and because of that, you know, that's the way we always do business, that way, and the Chairman will address that. It is listed as correspondence. The Board has received it. They've actually done due diligence in terms of going through both myself and the Town Council, and also the State's attorneys, so I think if you listen to the response, you'll be all set.
Okay, so I'll cut to the Jason with however much time I have left. So I already know what the rationale is going to be for moving forward with the vote. The rationale from DLS is going to be that 100 percent of the override is appropriated in year one, because when it's put towards the funding purpose, those monies are assumed to be spent first before for the rest of the tax base. So I think, first of all, thank you for getting that clarification. I think that we understand it, but I think it raises another issue that needs to be addressed, and specifically, the, this estimated tax rate that came from the Town Accountant, looking out eight years. What's shown here is not what is described in the explanation from DLS. So what the Town Accountant has shown here is the levy limit going up from the override over a span of six years. That's not actually the case of what's going to have to happen. The levy limit will immediately go up by the full amount in year one. Now, the town, of course, doesn't have to levy that full amount, and that introduces the concept of excess levy capacity, which I think hasn't been relevant in the past, because the town's levy limit and the actual levied amount has been the same. And I believe the Town Accountant, when he puts this together, when he calculated his levy limits, when he calculated his 2.5 percent adjustments per year, it was based on that assumption that the levy limit and the actual levy was the same for both. We're going to be in a new scenario now, where there's going to be excess levy capacity, and I think that this sheet needs to be updated, because not only are these future-year levy limits incorrect, but the Proposition 2.5 adjustment numbers are also incorrect, because they're based on the levy only going up by that much each year. So I guess that would be our major ask, is if Mr. Cool republishes this document, to take into account what the plan, what the town is actually planning to do. So, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to ask the Selectmen if they understand what Mr. Gill's explanation was. Mr. Reposo?
We have, and we're going to recognize it in 6C.
Okay. Everyone is fully aware of what he just laid out, though, as far as the levy limit and the levy excess capacity definitions, and how that is not reflected in the sheet of the town promulgated?
Yes.
And it needs to be updated to be reflected accurately, because the override, $1 million override, would need to be appropriated immediately in year one.
No.
No.
Really?
Right.
Okay, well, we'll wait till 6C.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I just wanted clarification. The main ask that we'd be looking for is if we're going to get a new document that can be passed out to the public the way that the former one was. Can anybody on the Board, or Mrs. Callahan, can you tell me, will that happen?
I think the Board will have information as we go forward. I think we've done our due diligence in trying to address the correspondence that's come. We'll address that piece of the correspondence. I'm sure that the public will be engaged, as always. When we get new information, we publish it, and this is a different set of questions that you're asking us tonight, so I'm quite confident. We've been very good at giving the public information. We'll still do that.
Okay. It's just been a little bit frustrating, I would say, as a citizen, that the information seems to come with not enough time to digest and completely understand. We're talking about a vote that's two weeks away, and a timeline for people to accurately understand what they're looking at and be able to ask questions and fully understand what's going on. Is there any anticipation of when we might get this information?
Right now, we're working with the advice of Town Council, and we'll discuss that in 6C.
Thank you.
No correspondence.
I'm sorry, correspondence.
Nice try.
This is on the elementary school. These reports come out periodically, and the results of the tests, that the water samples were, all of them were absent of bacteria.
Thank goodness.
Thank goodness. And the report will be archived in the town's records, in town records. The Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, this is a permit to ever-source energy, to giving them approval to use pesticide application on the power lines, and this approval, Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources is giving the approval, and it's subject to the provisions of Commonwealth of Massachusetts Regulation 333, all sections, and will remain in effect for the years 2018 to 2022, unless suspended or revoked or mortified.
Mr. Chairman, that's just for vegetation management, correct?
Yes. All right, we're at 6C. We, this Board here recognizes the receipt of the letter, the open letter to the Board and Town Officials. And we've discussed this with the Department of Revenue and with the advice of Council. I am aware that a lot of the comments have been generated regarding the general override ballot question being placed before the town voters. Some of those comments questions the legality of ballot question itself. Please be aware that the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator have worked closely with Town Council and the Department of Revenue in drafting this question. The question is in full compliance with the statutory requirements of Proposition 2.5, and is therefore proper for consideration by voters. Equally, the process proposed by the Town for the use of any additional capacity derived from successful override has been determined to fully comply with the law. Since this is a matter involving a ballot question already presented to the voters and is included as correspondence only on the agenda for tonight's meeting, I will not be entertaining any discussion of this matter as part of the public participation portion of this meeting. New business. Personnel Policies and Procedures.
Mr. Chairman, before you is some information that relates to social media and the area where we can actually make improvements with personnel policies and procedures. We're not voting or entertaining an actual policy this evening. I just want to bring it to this Board's attention. We do not have one, just like right now, we do not have a Facebook page. When I first came in, that Facebook page was compromised and a virus was sent through, and at that time, right before the former Executive Secretary had left, she had deleted the entire page and was expressly told to do that by our IT Director because of the issues of security and potential breach. Since that time, after going and being in a jail cell in the police station, and then finally getting a grant for IT, we've been in the process of actually putting together a new website, with the expectation we will also have a Facebook page. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion that's been generated, not just recently over the override issue, but in general, when there are hot-button topics. The one thing that I think we need to do is not so dissimilar that other communities have done, and that is actually develop a comprehensive policy with regards to not only business related to social media, but also with the expectation that whether you're an appointed official, elected official, or an employee, that we will have some guidelines and that people will be aware of them. This area gets very tricky, and once again, my job is to also look at the town and to insulate it from being susceptible to infractions that relate to both open meeting law and also public records violations. A lot of people aren't aware that Massachusetts statute, and I did put in an article, it's actually crafted by our law firm, and our law firm represents one of the largest amounts of municipalities in the Commonwealth. I also gave you one example, although I have a large folder of collecting a lot of different social media policies, but the one thing that our Town Council had made sure to bring to your attention, because some people have talked about when is it appropriate, when is it not. Most Board Members and also appointed officials, whether they're elected or not, understand that the issue for not violating open meeting law, whether you're on a social media forum or whether you're in an actual Board meeting, when to refrain from those kinds of activities. But another nuance of the law that's really important for people to understand, and I want to start to make people aware of, is that regardless of whether you're on a wireless communication and not using a computer or a device inside this building, when you are out on social media, if you're talking about town business, whether you're an employee, an appointed official, elected official, you're talking about town business, the way that the law currently reads in the Commonwealth, and you can read that even in the Oxford Policy, is that it is considered matters of public record. So whether you belong to a private Facebook page, or whether you're doing it from your own, you have to be aware of that. So I just put that out there, because some people say what they want in those settings, and they're quite within their rights to do that, but also be aware that it can potentially be public record. So we don't have a policy and procedure. I think it's important that we formulate one. I'm going to actively work on that with Town Council, and like I said, I've reached out to several other Town Administrators who've already done that. This would be a policy in which every single person would, who is newly elected or appointed or an employee, would actually receive it, much like we do the sexual harassment policy, conflicts of interest policies, those kinds of things, and so that they would be aware of it. So I think it's a good time, since we're going to be making this major upgrade, and, you know, I know some people have talked about, some Town Employees while we've been in this interim, of being good to go on their own accounts. They don't like that. They actually don't feel comfortable with that, and they just do it because they know we're getting, and some of those people are working with me on this new website. So we're getting there, but just to be aware of that is one of those things that we will move towards, and it will be better in the future, but we, I think, it will be timely if we put all of that together. And if you read the article that was put into the municipal advocate, it was written by Rick Holland, who is one of the premier people who has been literate on this issue and helped many, many municipalities, so I think we can come up with something good in.
We have a number of excellent exemplars. It shouldn't be that long a tedious process.
But it is different, and people just need to be aware of that, and, you know, one of the things, I know it's very popular right now, but I was just reading the other day about Facebook's surveying of their actual customers, and one of the largest percentages of drop-off are teenagers ages 13 to 17. They're not using it anymore. So, you know, it might be Facebook today, it might be something else tomorrow, but social media is definitely here to stay. We know that, and we just have to come to grips with that in some ways. So I will bring something in the future, hopefully right around the time that we'll launch, and I expect that that will be not too long in the future.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Just to call your attention to the Department of Revenue slash Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education. There'll be a joint meeting tomorrow evening of Blackstone and Millville Selectmen Finance Committee, Finance Committees, and BMI School Committee. That'll take place tomorrow evening at, at --
The Hartnett Media Center.
The Hartnett Media Center at 5:00, 5:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that there will be, the representatives that will be there will be both from DESI, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and also the Division of Local Services. This is an unprecedented meeting. I do want to say thank you to the Board, because they have pushed, along with the School Board, for trying to figure out ways to address this issue going forward. We had a pretty frank meeting recently with the School Board, and, you know, one of the comments that I made at that time is that the answer is not in this room by ourselves, and that we have long recognized that we need both, I think, some counsel from both of these respective state agencies, since they are different, and each Board governs itself in a different manner. And so if you look at this particular agenda, you will see that this did come from the state with the notion that they want to be able to be an active participant in helping us, you know, frame how we're actually going to address this. We've talked about why we are in this predicament today. That has been a longtime trend, but more recently has really put this town in between a rock and a hard place financially. And once again, if you look at the actual agenda, one of the goals is to look for both the long-term financial stability and actually coming together with an agreed-upon revenue consensus process, not one that gets changed from town meeting to town meeting, and one that all parties will be able to be respectful of. At that time, I know we have our Finance Director, who will also be giving a synopsis of our actual financial projections and how we came to needing this meeting, and so I think I'm looking very much forward to it, and just wanted to enlighten the Board of those aspects.
In the past, the Department of Local Services have been very helpful to this town, and it's starting to get us turned around. They issued a couple of reports that we've addressed, and the town is making progress going forward, and I really appreciate the efforts of the Department of Local Services and the Department of Revenue in their support of this town.
I just have a question, Mrs. Callahan. Do we know if the new Superintendent is going to be present at that meeting?
It's a good question. I've been --
No.
No.
He will not. He had planned to be in attendance, and his schedule changed today, so he won't.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad she's here, because I was about to tell you that he was coming.
We were all under that impression.
That's too bad. Well, you know, I think regardless, we know that the new Superintendent will be coming in, and I'm sure that he'll be in close touch with his respective state agency and also the Chairwoman of the Board to get the latest information, but we will go on with it.
Next, item 7C is the recertification of Blackstone-Millville Regional School District for Fiscal 2019. We have a recertified budget, with a vote on a recertified budget that totals for Millville of $2,919,338, composed of the mandatory, I think it's $2,007, I'm sorry. Total assessment is $2,919,338. Minimum contribution, well, mandatory is $2,74,258. Minimum contribution is $507,276. An exclusionary cost, $337,804. That's a 3.4 percent increase over Fiscal '18, and that amounts to $97,068.
Mr. Chairman, I thought I would ask our Finance Director to come up. One of the things that I think is important to note here, that this is a change than what was voted on at our town meeting. I know both you and myself were approached by the Superintendent at that time that said the 3 percent, even though the Finance Committee of Blackstone had made this increase suggestion and vote for Blackstone to have essentially $100,000, and the Town of Millville to come up with almost $40,000. The Board of Selectmen were of the impression and had taken a vote to increase it only by the 3 percent. We were approached that night to say that that was the number they were going to stick to. They were not going to go for the increased amount of $140,000. So the recertification budget is recertified, which means the minimum contribution or additional contribution, excuse me, to the Town of Millville will be another $39,362. I don't know if you have any questions to ask our finance director, who is here this evening, but obviously, that was not something that we had projected in our cards, which is another reason why I think this meeting tomorrow will be important, because we've been in predicaments very similar to this, where, you know, unfortunately, the number is changing. I'm not, you know, faulting the school board, we have the rights to actually certify a budget at a lower number. It was at 18%, so obviously, this is much lower. We're very grateful for that. But still, it's, you know, it should have been something that had been brought to our attention, and it could have been a different trajectory here. But now that we are faced with that, of course, you know, with the override and non-override budgets, that's something that would be of concern.
So this...
Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Yeah, he's awesome.
So basically, we'll be having a special town meeting in either case.
Well, isn't it true that if we take no action, it's acceptance of it?
That happened before, yes.
Yes, we've done that before.
But if we don't have an override budget, that is not necessarily something... Yeah. This gets tacked on to the $240,000 that we still have to go back to the drawing board to remove, and we already said that we would be doing that in a special town meeting, so, yeah.
And I will say, I was at the school committee meeting, not for the whole time, but for a couple, I think like two and a half hours, and they were still in the thick of it. But they're making, in their dialogue, they're making substantial cuts to staffing and Chromebooks and things that are, once again, mandated by the state to test students on Chromebooks and technology, but give no funding. So you know, they're cutting Chromebooks, they're doing, they're going through their budget as we may have to do to ours. So you know, we'll see. I think it's a hard position for all of the groups right now. Very difficult, so.
Mrs. Radju, do you have anything?
Oh, I don't have anything.
Mrs. Radju is chairman of the school committee.
So what is the process for the $40,000? How does this go to the town, or do we have to wait a certain amount of time? What is the exact process?
I think part of it is, right now, we have our budget already approved at town meeting, and we also know that if the override doesn't pass, that we would be doing a special town meeting. If the override passes, obviously, we have a much different trajectory in which we are allowed to take. We won't be in that structural deficit that we have right now. And we would have the option to do precisely what the vice chairwoman has mentioned to us. And if we choose that that is not what people want to do, then that would be, you know, something that would come up in a special town meeting in the fall, or around that time, if not earlier. It changes dramatically if the override doesn't pass, obviously. And so that case, then we would be looking at a much quicker trajectory on looking at the budget and what other additional cuts there would be, and then also trying to figure out where we would be, because at the end of December, you know, obviously, we would have to present that balance budget. So I think, you know, there might be some people who feel that we have to have a special town meeting right after the override vote. I think what we need to do is be able to let the public absorb what's going on with this override vote. This is something that came to us not at our town meeting, it's something that's coming almost in the 11th hour as we're going forward, and I'm not saying that we won't address it, we have to address it, but we don't have to address it today. We're going to have to look to see what the townspeople decide to do on June 19th, and then afterwards, we'll be able to address that in time.
I didn't know if there was a timeframe around the recertified budget. There's a certain number of days or anything?
Forty-five, is it?
Yeah.
Forty-five days. If we don't do anything within 45 days, it's accepting it. If we go to town meeting and we still vote the same way as not to give them the money, then it lands back onto the school committee to decide if they want a super town meeting.
Right. Or to recertify it at a different...
Or to recertify it at a lower number.
There's options.
There is.
But I throw that one out.
Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you.
Vote is not required.
No, no.
All business.
Mr. Chairman, you'll see, it says DEP update for the Kempton area well testing. I know that this is very important to people, and that's one of the reasons I continue to put water testing within the agenda. This one in particular, the last time I spoke with you, was that there was going to be well testing for those people who are not, did not see our previous town meetings. We do have an area in the Kempton Road area that has been tested positive in the past for an illegal dumping act in which there are volatile organic compounds, and we have most houses that were near this area have been provided water from the town of Uxbridge. But there had been a home on the Uxbridge side that recently had tested, or they said had gotten a hit for detection of VOCs, and hence, the Department of Environmental Protection has gone out. They have so far tested 30 private wells on our side in the town of Millville. And so far, with the 20 results that were back after my speaking with the regional director, there was only one home, it was 54 Kempton Road, that had what they call 1-4 dioxane, which is really like almost laundry detergent. It could be from a septic, porous septic that might have come out, but it's not anything to be concerned of, and all the other homes have tested negligent for any of volatile organic compounds. There's still another 10 results, and I'll bring that to you when they're there, but they were not there. So that's really good news. I mean, if there's any good news about water and, you know, what we've been through as a town for having issues on two of our neighboring borders, one Rhode Island and the other one, this is important for the townspeople to know that are there. So I'm happy to report so far, knock on wood, that it's coming out okay.
And the one well that was found that we have an issue, the dioxin is a very low level, 0.3 parts per million, and that was only on one well. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Mr. Chairman, I know that both the vice chairwoman and Ms. Blake had asked about giving an update, and I wanted to report to the board that we're moving in the direction to have an opening and celebration and dedication of the Captain Joseph D. Venoco Memorial Playground on Wednesday, June 13th at 2:00 PM at the Millville Elementary School. Everyone is invited. We are going to make this a fun event for the kids that will be in school, they're going to take a break. I've spoken with the principal, he's very excited, as we all are, and we'll have a couple little small things, I think, to surprise the children with, and so I would encourage the board to be there for, you know, a celebration. As far as the accessibility, both the chief, myself, and the parks commissioner are working hard to finalize the placement of the ADA mats. They have arrived, and we will just work to get it finalized and for the playground to actually open and be accessible to as many of the equipment pieces that we have, and all the way to the actual playground on the 600-foot path that is handicap accessible, so.
And we all want to thank you for your extreme effort in getting this accomplished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate everybody who has worked very hard, and I know that my, there he is, highway surveyor, has got some more work for us to do to get the mats in place and to get it ship-top shape for the kids. But it'll be exciting.
Thank you. Selectmen's forum.
I have something. So for the board members, I reached out to Joe, and I said to him that I felt that there are some questions in regards to the upcoming vote on the 19th that people have questions about. And sometimes, different forums can be intimidating to different people, or, you know, it's a little harsh out there, so, or general meetings, our open sessions that we had back in April. Not everyone is a large group participant or feels comfortable with that. So with that, Joe and I have sat down, and we've carved out some time in our schedules, and we are going to, I will post them later, and I'm just waiting to get verification from the library that we can use the space there, but Joe and I are going to make ourselves available. Let me think again. It was supposed to be, we were supposed to start tomorrow, but we've got our other meeting. So Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday of this week, and Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday of the following week. There is a small glitch that maybe I can ask one of our fellow selectmen to fill in so that I can attend the fifth grade band concert. But other than that, Joe and I will make ourselves available if anyone wants to come in. We'll have all of the documents, which are on the website, just to explain or to, you know, if someone needs clarification or how things work. So we're going to make ourselves available for public office hours to discuss any questions that people may have.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Jen, you said that will be posted. Where are you going to be posting these dates and times?
Cable.
On cable? That's the only place?
I'll put it out there in the usual formats, and I actually will probably call the Windsocket Call, and Valley Breeze date lines are difficult, so as soon as I get verifications, I can do that.
Is it going to be posted on the board out here?
It's not a public meeting, so it doesn't need to be.
So just...
It's not, it's not signed. It's not...
I understand. No, I completely understand. I just wanted to...
Trying to get it out there in any way I can. Yep.
Okay.
So, that's it. Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question. Not all of us have cable or my newspapers, so how are those families going to find out?
We'll put it out there as many places as we can, so.
Moving on. Town administrators' report, CMRPC, Open Space.
I just wanted to alert the board that we're coming to the conclusion of our Open Space Recreation Plan, and the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission is working on a deadline, so that we'll make another deadline to apply for a much larger park grant, and the official submission to the state, we want to have done before the end of June. It's very important for us timewise. So they're asking to come before you the next meeting to do the presentation, along with Tom Mulvey and Pam Maloney, who's the vice chair. It's really enlightening. I think it'll be a great presentation, and I just want you to be aware that they've asked to come before you. And if we have no problem with that, I hope so, because some of the other timelines are contingent. That will require a vote to approve, and then it gets sent to the state, and it gets put on that particular domain, and then we open ourselves by that vote and approval and acceptance by the state to a whole host of grants that we have never been able to access. So I'm looking forward to that. The second item on the town administrators' update is EPA Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems Permit, which is effective July 2018. I don't know if you would like to say anything about this, is the highway surveyor, but he's also the enforcer for stormwater. I did put in here, this permit has been delayed in terms of going into effect. I also put down that there is some local, actual educational, point-by-point overview of the permit, the schedule of the major permit requirements, the fact that it's not just the DPW anymore, and how to engage other people financially in the town, because this will cover aspects with a notice of intent for permit timelines and associated costs. We've put this off, even though we have budgeted money, and I think that we're in a good position to be able to actually comply, but this MS4 permit itself has been kind of pushed aside for a while, but it's coming to bear now. So I have good confidence that our highway surveyor and also the admin lead will make sure that we're in compliance, because the timeframe for submission and gathering that data is pretty tight, once it goes into effect on July 1st. I think it's the fall, right?
September.
September, that quick. Reminds me of MS4s. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. And then the third item is OSHA, the expansion of protections to all public employees with regards to training. There is new law that has been put into effect that actually took place, and it started in February, but for OSHA requirements have always been both in the private and the state sector, but municipalities were not necessarily included in that unless, you know, a municipality understood that you had people directly engaged in workplace conditions that were at risk or potentially hazardous. But there are going to be, and we are going to need to comply, and I did put some training examples for everyone to be literate in OSHA regulations. And so there is a potential, because obviously, training in a lot of the sectors that relate to OSHA compliance are expensive. The Department of Industrial Accidents has created a grant program and can award up to $25,000 before I have to go out and actually start complying with this for our own employees across all the sectors. I will be looking to see if we can garner one of these $25,000 grants, but it's just another example of the kinds of things we have to comply with, and one of the things that we have to keep in the foreground of trying to make happen, regardless of what's happening to us for our budgets and the like. So I'll try again some magic and handiwork at another grant, but it's more of concern to make sure that we actually comply and don't show the state that we're not moving in the right direction, so we're going to need to do that.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The question is, should we be considering a focal point, an individual go-to for OSHA?
Considering who to go to the OSHA?
A focal point.
A focal point?
A person, an individual.
Oh, oh, and it was like a MEMA director, an OSHA director?
Not necessarily a director's position, but...
No, no, but somebody who coordinates. I'm sorry, poor choice of words. We could do that, and that's one of the reasons I've talked with both Ryan about this and also our police and fire chief. But it's not just going to be those people, there will also be other aspects that can be involved with people even in regular town functions, so that's a good idea. I'll take it into advisement and look to see if maybe we can have somebody, obviously, there are certain parts of our employee status that we need to make sure that they comply and as quickly as possible, but there are others, I think, that would be a new prospect for them. But I'll talk about that and see if, you know, and I can update you on another committee meeting about whether we've gone in that direction, if that's okay.
Yep.
Should we not be as fortunate to receive any grant funds? Is that something MIA could help us with?
They can. That's another piece of it. Unfortunately, a lot of the MIA things aren't necessarily scheduled right around us, which means that you have to actually send employees, who many of them are part-time to begin with, on their own time to go out, but it is one of the things that they do offer some. But then you have to actually make sure of, no matter what the area for compliance is, that you can make sure that each employee gets the requirements that are related to their job.
Specific training.
Right. But that's also another thing that we're looking at. I just saw a whole bunch of them, but they weren't, they weren't anywhere near us, so hopefully, they will be in the future. But good ask.
FEMA.
Yes, and the final one is for FEMA. It seems like we've had the EPA, the OSHA, and the FEMA, so they're all federal agencies. Right in your packets, I know that the chairman had brought up the issue that there had been a local hearing by the Federal Emergency Management Association with regards to floodplains along the Blackstone River, and with the notion that they were doing a discovery process and looking to map out and do assessment and planning. Having represented a town just north of here that actually had more than a 100-year flood and saw the Rice City Dam compromised beyond belief, that this area along the Blackstone River, including for the town of Millville, is subject to actually going through a period of reevaluation. So they just did that. They sent this out because, you know, one of the things that they wanted to do is note that there are some new additional study parameters, but we were fortunate enough as far as the Blackstone River, the Middle River, the Mill River, and the Quinn-Sigman River, all the areas that they had studied, that we are not listed as one of the communities that would have to upgrade and comply, you know, with their further USGS findings. So we duck that. We have other things that we have to comply with, but one of the things that they're looking to... they're looking to do is actually work even more closely with changing what those communities have to do for their mapping and, uh, what they should be doing precautionary-wise in the, um, event that there is a flooding disaster. So I thought I would bring that up since you, you had, um, made a point to, to bring it up before and, uh, it's just to close the loop on that, so...
And I've noticed on some of the Commonwealth maps, the flood, uh, the, some of the wet lines aren't identified in terms of vulnerable ponds and that type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Going forward.
And that would conclude that and you have your next meeting on June 18th and you'll have to sign the...
Take a motion to adjourn for a second.
Rule.
Aye.
Aye. adjourn, thank you all for...